Wish it would come earlier, I could use Frank size. Giant steak. Big giant steak. Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Thank you.
Glad to see somebody else having some munchies. I'm still eating a bit.
Dummy bears.
Mine is dinner.
Good evening, everyone. I note that the time is 7 o'clock. I'm going to call the meeting to order and before we go to public comment, I will ask the town manager to please announce the disclaimer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder to everybody that this meeting is being recorded. We, just before, before we get started, just ask folks to please use the raise hand function if they wish to make a comment. You can also send a message to me and indicate that you'd like, like to speak. I'll do my best to identify anybody and change any names as they pop up, but I may send you a message if it's a phone number or a other, other type of naming convention that I don't recognize. If this, if this meeting does get interrupted, we'll immediately end the call and I will send out new instructions by email to rejoin the meeting. But other than that, I turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And we will start with our public comment period. If you wish to make a comment or have a question, please raise your hand and the town manager will announce your, will announce you and please remember to state your name and your street. Has anyone indicated they wish to speak at this time?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. The next item is approval of the agenda as presented. Is there a motion? I see Councilman Heller and I saw a second with Circo. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Please, thank you. I think it was unanimous. The next item-
No, 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 no.
You have a comment.
And not at this time.
I mean, not, no comment?
Are you, are you commenting on the variance on the agenda?
No, we wanted to comment on the motion to approve the agenda.
Right.
Well, there is no comment on that.
We want you-
No discussion on the-
No, that's not, that's not, that's, there's no comment on that. Okay, thank you. The next item is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as written. Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing, hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed. Thank you very much. So the next item is public hearing motion to consider a request for an eight-foot variance on the front established building line for in addition to the existing house located at the proper property 4806 Grantham Avenue as requested by Lou Belladame, Belladame Architects on behalf of Dudley folks. And before we begin the hearing, there is a preliminary matter that the town attorney is going to present.
Don't know that we have the town attorney with us quite yet.
Okay, I just, let me, let me get him. You know, he probably thinks the meeting is at 7:30. Well, while we are waiting for the town attorney, let's have the building, let's begin the building administrators report. Mr. Meyer.
Good evening. At 4501 Cumberland Avenue, property has been purchased by a builder and they're preparing conceptual plans from removing the existing house and building two new houses on two previously recorded lots. The applicant has applied for two building permits from the county and submitted a concept plan to the town, but they haven't submitted anything to the town yet. At 4811 Cumberland Avenue, the building permit for the addition to the existing house and replacement for two retaining walls was issued on November of 2020. County has closed their building permit on June 17th and the staff is scheduling a final site visit in order to close the town's permit. At 4505 Greystone, the applicants had submitted an application to make exterior revisions to the existing house. The county permit was issued on June 23rd. The town issued their building permit on July 13th, but no work has begun yet. At 5516 Trent, the applicants submitted plans for several additions to the existing house. The town issued a building permit on August 20 of 2020. Contractor recently stated that they will not require a town permit extension. That they stated they got minor interior items to complete such as plumbing fixtures, shower doors, and the homeowner's punch list, and they expect to have the county's final permit sometime in early August and no work is beginning on outside, no work is taking place on the outside of the house. And at 5508 Uppingham, the county has closed their permit and the staff will be doing a final site visit to close the town's permit. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Council President Circo, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you for the report.
Thank you. Council member Barr.
I have no questions either.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. You're muted.
No, no questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Kumar.
No questions for me.
Thank you, Councilor Rowan.
No questions.
Okay, thank you. So the town, Mr. Town Manager, the town attorney logged in to a previous Zoom.
Okay, I just messaged him and resent him the link, so.
Okay.
Matt, that's what happened to me too.
Me too.
Okay.
Okay, well, I guess I don't think he's gotten it yet, Matt. Send in the one from the, from the announcements on Friday.
Or from the calendar entry that you sent out.
Yeah, I found it from the announcements from Friday.
Me too.
That's what I used to.
Me too. Work fine.
He should be here in a minute. He's just, he's been- Okay, here he is. Thank you, Mr. Town Attorney. You can unmute. And so I called the item, the, the item on the variance and I announced that there was a preliminary matter that you will be presenting to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize. I was apparently using the July link to get locked.
It's okay. I think there was a, other, others had that problem, so thank you for being here.
Okay. So the town code provides that ordinarily building permit applications and variance applications need to be submitted by the 15th of the month in order to be on the following month's regularly scheduled meeting agenda. But there's a late procedure that's available if the application is filed by the 22nd. I understand the variance application in this case was filed by the 22nd and the applicant sought application of the late procedure process. The code provides that the council can allow a application to proceed under the late procedure upon council discretion and weighing certain factors and read the factors in case everyone's not familiar with them. read the factors in case everyone's not familiar with them. In exercising its discretion, the town council shall consider such factors as reasons for late filing, need for expedition, nature, extent, and complexity of the work proposed to be performed, effect upon adjoining and confronting properties, extent of prior notice to interested persons, actual or likely opposition, and hardship to the applicant. So whether the proceeding proceeds tonight and whether we have actually authorized the late procedure to be used in weighing those factors. And the council can hear from the applicant and from the Levine's who have submitted.
They're here, too.
Thank you. Who have submitted a, a letter requesting that the council not apply the late procedure. And because they're here, you know, rather than summarizing their arguments, we'll let them present. But first, I, I would suggest the council let the applicants present on why they believe the council should apply the late procedure. Then the council can hear from the Levine's and then ask any questions the council has of the applicants, the Levine's and staff. And then decide whether we proceed this evening.
May I make one comment about the, the facts that was just recited by the, uh.
No, you will have an opportunity, you will have an opportunity to speak after the applicant has presented. So.
Thank you.
Could the applicant please present their case for having, holding the hearing tonight? Thank you.
Could you, could you just repeat the criteria there, the five things that you said, because we're, we're not necessarily prepared for this directly.
Sure. So the, the code provides that section one twelve hyphen eight D, as in dog, in exercising its discretion, the town council shall consider such factors as reasons for the late filing, need for expedition, nature, extent, and complexity of the work proposed to be performed, effect upon adjoining and confronting properties, extent of prior notice to interested persons, actual or likely opposition, and hardship to the applicant.
Okay.
Sure. Um, hi, I'm Jamie Miller. Uh, thank you all for hearing us out, at least on this part. Um, I guess I, I can just say that we, it took us a bit longer to, when we decided we wanted to be heard at this council meeting, the way the, the way the setbacks and the established building lines work on that block were a bit complicated and it took us a little longer to get our materials together, understanding the EBL and what we were really asking for than we expected. So, when, so we decided we would just try to get this request for the expedite this variance request before you so that we can really know what we're dealing with and get on to the building permitting phase, um, in which there's, you know, is obviously a, a complex question that has a lot of impact on everyone and, um, we were decided that we would put this before you so that we can really know. Uh, it's obviously a, that's where the complication comes in and having finally gained an understanding of this sort of unique setback situation that we face. Uh, we found ourselves late, um, but decided, and, and also we're a bit confused by the code because the code was confusing to us about, a little bit about when the variance request was due as opposed to a full building permit. To be honest, we're, we're not lawyers and we misunderstood that a bit. Um, but, but here we are before you and, um, would love to have a chance for you to hear us out with this request.
And, and you're also, please feel free, if you have any questions about the code or the process, feel free to ask the town attorney now.
Great. Thank you.
Do you have any?
Well, I, I don't think at this moment. We might, depending on what you guys decide.
Okay.
On this question.
Well, well, this will really be your only opportunity to ask because it's the, the procedure we're using tonight is you make your case for having the expedited hearing. Then the Levine's will be able to comment and have their side, their view, and then, and after that, then the council will debate amongst themselves and decide whether they're going to have the hearing tonight. So if there's anything else, i- is that procedure acceptable, Mr. Town Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So so in case you have any questions that you need answered before you add anything to your presentation, feel free now.
I guess, uh, you know, we, we got the application in as soon as we could. Um, and we were never told when we submitted it that there was going to be a problem. Um, so um, with, with this, with giving, with submitting it late. We didn't even know it was being submitted late, but um, I guess she spoke to the section about why it was late. There was one thing about the hardship. Um, I do want to explain why we feel like we have a hardship uniquely, but, uh, um, I don't know if that's why the thing was late. I think it was just it's, and it needs to be expedited because, you know, we've done a lot of, we're going to be stuck and we're going to be stuck. We won't be able to do anything. We don't know the ground rules, what we gotta, what we have to do now. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna not be able to do anything on our project for, until the next, um, opportunity to meet, to meet with you guys. So that's, uh, um, so tha- that's how I feel, but, um, and I can hand it off to our architect to explain further.
Yes, I was going to say, since Mr. Belladameus is the technically the applicant, maybe he wants to add something or have.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Uh, Lou Belladameus, um, architect for the applicant, uh, evening, council members, and yes. Um, I just want to go through all seven reasons, Ron, if we can. Um, the late filing, um, Jamie and Dudley already talked about that. That was basically, you know, preparing our supporting documents and, and pulling that together. The need for expedition has to do with the, you know, the, the chain reaction effect in order to get this permitted, you know? This isn't like a normal building permit where we have to, uh, you know, we would have gone to the county first, got the permit and come back. We've got to get the variance first, finish our drawings, you know, because we can't proceed with construction drawings until we know whether we're getting the variance or not. Uh, then go to the county, then come back to you all. So, you know, or at least, you know, say you approve the variance, um, we're at least two months from going to the county and then we're going to be in the county for two months. So that's the need for the expedition. Nature and the extent of the proposal, um, I think it's pretty clear. Uh, Doug will go over this, but, um, we're requesting three variances from the front setback from the EBL. One, I mean, I get, that's a question, Ron. What, what is it we're requesting? Is it three variances or is it one variance that addresses all three setback conditions?
So there, there's three separate variances because we, the bay window is treated as a separate building envelope. And then the first and second story are, are treated as separate building elements as well.
Okay, so three variances. So they're all pretty straightforward. Seven point eight feet for the first floor, five point eight feet for the second floor, and then three feet beyond the first floor for the bay window, as if it was a normal bay window in front of the house. Um, of those three, only the bay window takes the proposed addition beyond the front setback of the lot. So in my mind, it's a pretty straightforward, um, application. Effect on adjoining and confronting owners. I would say this is a modest proposal, um, and I know the Levine's are going to disagree, but I think it's does not have a, an adverse impact on any neighbor. The extent of prior notice, admittedly, that was short. That did not happen until, uh, the same week that we did the filing. Uh, opposition, to my knowledge, only the Levine's are opposing, I think. Matt has, are there any other, has anybody else filed any objection? Hardship to the applicant is, uh, what we talked about before is the time involved and the fact that they're carrying two houses right now and need to shorten this process as much as possible.
Okay, thank, is that, does that conclude all your questions? Okay, thank you. Now, Mr. and Mrs. Levine, this is your opportunity to present your views and side.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to make certain that the letter we filed with respect to the, uh, timing has been accepted for filing and is part of the record in this matter. It was a letter that we wrote today.
Yes, that has been received and entered into the record as, as well as the, the applicant's response, which I understand has been shared with you.
No. If there was an applicant's response, uh, this afternoon, we've not seen that.
We're talking about a letter, not the original letter that was written by Mr. Tullander, but one that we read today after we saw the, uh, the Fox's response to us.
Yes, and that was also disseminated to the council and entered into the, uh, entered into the record and the, uh, the council packet.
You're talking about our letter, right?
Both, but yes, yes.
Oh, is there a response to, to that?
No.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Um, I, I, I'd like to, uh, augment, if I, if I may, uh, the presentation of the town attorney. Uh, he, he correctly noted that to be on the following month's, uh, calendar uh, under the standard procedure, a, a application must be filed by the fifteenth of the month. Uh, then there is some latitude, uh, which allows seven more days to the twenty-second. Uh, the application was filed on the last of that, of those dates. And if it's not filed by that date, it may not be considered by the town council according to the provision, uh, of the code. Uh, what happened in this case, uh, but not addressed by, uh, the, the, the town attorney is that an amendment was filed after the twenty-second. Specifically, the amendment was filed on the twenty-seventh, uh, which was out of time by, as a matter of law. Uh, and this was not an, an insubstantial correction. This was an elusive, this was part of, of a third variance. Uh, so it was extremely substantive. Now, so I, I, I would say that the late filing after the twenty-second is dispositive of this matter, that it may not be considered at this time and may be submitted, uh, later. That said, uh, even were there to be a, a contrary view, and I can see no basis for such a view, and none has been offered. Uh, the applicant has dallyed with this matter for approximately a year. Uh, that they, there has been ample time to put together those papers. Uh, they control the pace of this matter one hundred percent. We had no role in it. Uh, the burden is on the applicant to follow the provisions in the code and justify their request. Uh, this particular applicant is represented by the architect that represents the town of Somerset. So any excuse that they didn't understand the language of the code uh, is, uh, is, is an empty excuse. Uh, the town architect knows.
Mr. Levine, let me just correct you. Mr. Belladameus is not the town architect.
Well. I, I appreciate that, sir. Um, I can tell you that on his website, he says he represents the town Somerset.
Okay, well, just so you know, he, he, we don't have a town architect.
Okay. Um, but in any event, uh, whether he is or is not, and I accept your statement that he is not, uh, he surely has represented the town and he surely purports to be intimate with the code. Uh, so a, a, an excuse offered by the folks, uh, that they were confused by its language uh, is an empty excuse. Um, moreover, uh, they were supposed to, in writing, uh, address the provisions of one twelve dash eight, uh, I guess it's D. Um, uh, and, and they have not. Yeah. They must give reasons for the late filing. They've given none other than the fact that they didn't even know it was late. Uh, according to Mr. Folks. They need to give, they need to give to the council a, a reasons for their need for expedition and their reasons they offer are merely that this is, this is a long and complicated process. They've offered none. Um, the nature and extent and complexity of the proposed work. What could be more complex than this? There are architects' drawings. We are not architects. They are in a, uh, they are in the jargon of, of architect. We would like to have, perhaps consult with another architect to evaluate what this is. Uh, they, they, they don't purport to talk about the impact this has on us. Uh, the use. Excuse me?
They say it has no impact on us.
You hear Laura just say, they say it has no impact on us when our view of it is that the impact is profound. Um, uh, based on that impact, uh, we have an actual, uh, opposition or a likely opposition. Uh, uh, they have done nothing to show that what they're seeking is, uh, is minimally intrusive, uh, intrusive, and they have a duty to do that. And their hardship is the fact that they say they are frustrated uh, and that this has caused them some costs or is likely to cause them some costs. Uh, although that's somewhat mysterious because if they don't have any architectural hours spent, don't know what the costs would be. Uh, in, in any event, the hardship, uh, uh, a hardship on the applicant, which is the result of the applicant's choices, is per se not a basis for a variance. Uh, that is found in the code, section one twelve dash fourteen, uh, E one B three. Uh, and all of these, the entirety of this application is based on choices uh, that the applicant has made. Uh, Mr. Belladameus calls them requirements of the client, but they're just choices. They want a pantry by a given size. They want a workshop of a given size. They want a garage of a given size. Uh, they could adjust what they want. If they want all of those things, they needed to buy a bigger lot. And they didn't. They bought this lot knowing its shape, knowing its, whether it was the most shallow on the, on the, uh, block. Uh, they knew all of that, uh, and happens to be, I think, one of the widest on the block. Uh, uh, they knew the house next to which they were bidding uh, had, uh, these trapezoid windows, one of which you can see here uh, right behind us. I can see maybe the second one as well. And the, uh, and, and the building they have in mind uh, will peer right in through those windows. Those are windows that cannot have blinds. It is not possible to block that view. Uh, they are going to double, I say that double, the height of the house that's there now. Mr. Bellademas wrote that to us by his email.
So, Mr. Levine, in the interest of time, I, right now, you seem to be arguing on the point of the variance, and the point of this preliminary hearing, so to speak, is whether or not to hold the hearing tonight.
Yes, no, I have something.
So, so I appreciate all that input, but if you could stick to the, this preliminary issue.
All right, I, I would add that, well, as for reasons for late filing, there's no good reason given. The nature, extent, and complexity of the work proposed to be performed, as Barry said, I mean, we are overwhelmed, we just got this stuff, we have other things going on in our lives, but we're trying to sort it out, try to understand what it all means, try to understand what our rights are, what, try to understand, you know, how, what, we know we don't like it, but, you know, what, they were suggesting that they would discuss with us, they might modify it. I mean, we, we are overwhelmed by the complexity, the nature and extent and complexity of it. We find it just staggering. And the idea that they would be decided tonight, I mean, is just to us, like, impossible. It's very complex, and it's profound. I mean, they get this variance, that's permanent. That's a building right outside our window here, that is going forward eight feet, or seven feet, or whatever it is, and, and permanent. If it harms us, we're stuck with it for the rest of our time here, which, you know, Barry's been here fifty years, we're probably gonna stay the rest of our time here. So it's huge to us. Nature extent, the extent is enormous, complexity is enormous. So it's, it's, the effect upon us is profound. That's the next one, effect on adjoining properties. The extent of prior notice, they concede that what that was inadequate. Actual or likely opposition, yes. Hardship to the applicant, I mean, they, they have to, they'll have to wait while we have a chance to address all of this and figure it out. That's only fair. You know, it's, they popped this on us, literally just ten days ago.
I would like to make one further comment. And I would submit to you that it is audacious to suggest that the time allotted to us has been sufficient. They don't know what our professional commitments are. They don't know what our personal commitments are, and they don't know what, what difficulties or challenges we face. In fact, and I've said this to Mr. Challenger, and I, I don't relish saying it this, this publicly. We have a son with malignant melanoma. We have, we have really significant, serious medical concerns, and they are occupying the bulk of our time and life. Now, this may be, this may have caused some frustration to Mr. and Mrs. Folks, but they can't begin to understand what we're facing, and whether or not the time that they say is allotted to us is sufficient. It is not sufficient, and we object to it. I might, I might say in closing, that, you know, that members of the town council campaign for the, for the office, promoting their view of the quality of life in Somerset. Somerset's green, it's concerned about environment, it's concerned about air, and we support that. We support that. But the real question here is whether or not, whether or not those campaign, that campaign rhetoric really is grounded in values and votes. This is where it matters. If it's not campaign rhetoric, then giving us time to, to, to address issues of profound moment is important. And promises to maintain quality of life must be honored, and the opportunity to, to, to deal with quality of life, to deal with use of property, to deal with enjoyment of property is the obligation of this council.
So I would add that Mr. Fox said in his letter that if you don't agree to hear it tonight, he's asking for you to hear it a week from now. That doesn't give us enough time either. And so we said in our letter, we're asking for it to be put off. And it's because, in fairness to us, that we need to understand. They're saying that they want to go eight feet out. We're literally looking at this, trying to understand. And, oh, we should mention, it's in our letter, that they've both, both Mr. Bellademas and the folks have said to us, if we don't get the variance, it's gonna be worse for you. If you don't, if we don't get the variance, it's gonna be worse for you. Well, that, where does that leave us? That leaves us, left us totally speechless. We shouldn't speak up? It's gonna be worse for us if we speak up? So we don't even know, we were saying to each other, maybe we better not oppose it, because it's gonna be worse for us. Well, they didn't explain exactly in what way it's gonna be worse.
That can only be construed as a threat.
They said they want to work with us, they want, they want to be friendly neighbors. And, you know, Dudley told me, we're, we're not gonna go higher than your house. One thing I can promise you, we're not gonna go higher than your house. We thought that was the case, and we've been just stunned. And, but we'd like to work with them, but we need time. We need time. It's no way, they say they want to work with us after you've granted the variance, then they'll work with us. That's not the way it should work. They should work with us.
Do you, do you have, thank you for all that. Do you have any further questions of the town attorney or the town manager regarding the preliminary matter?
I have a question from Mr. Folks. I'd like to.
That is, that, that's, that's not part of this preliminary hearing.
All right. I'm no further.
Mr. Town Attorney, the, the applicant has requested to rebut that, is that?
Yeah, rebuttal on the topics raised by the respondents would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bellademas. And then we will go to questions from the council.
That wasn't actually rebuttal, I mean, I respect everything that Levine's have, have to say. I had a question for Ron. Is, you know, we didn't file an amendment. I responded on the twenty-seventh, I responded to questions from Doug. Drawings were not revised, we didn't change anything like that. I clarified something that he wanted me to reword in the description. Does that classify as amendment, does that make it late?
Yes, so that, that comment, I would classify as rebuttal. And the, the town council will have to decide whether the procedure was followed in this case. I would say that it is, it is common for plans to be amended and applications to be amended after they're filed. But the, the key question, I think, for the council is, was sufficient notice of the application given to abutting and confronting neighbors? And, you know, if, so what the council might consider there is, if the, if the extent of the variances weren't known until the twenty-seventh, you know, that presents a different set of facts than whether, you know, something non-substantive or clerical was being amended with respect to the application. But, you know, a variance hearing is a due process hearing, because there are property interests involved, including those of the applicant and abutting and confronting property owners. So there, it's important for the town to make sure that anyone with property interests receives due notice of the hearing. And, you know, due notice constitutes a description of what's being sought and how, you know, someone's able to assert their rights, you know, that they can appear at the hearing, with or without counsel, and make their thoughts known in the case. So we, as that often happens, and I'm, I'm no longer responding to Mr. Bellademas, I'm providing guidance to the, the council now. The code can be tricky at times, and, you know, sometimes Doug and I have to take a look at it in order to come up with a description of the variances needed, because sometimes that's not always, always clear. You know, that, that can take a week or so. And, you know, if that happens, then, you know, that delays what notice staff's able to give to, to neighbors. So that might be something the council would consider this evening. Happy to answer any other questions the council.
Okay, Mr. Bellademas, do you have any further rebuttal?
Yeah, I just want to say that the application, what was on the drawings, did not change. What Doug asked for clarification on was the bay window, which was already on there, was already shown as a protection. He asked that it be clarified that that was the third, a third item on there. That it wasn't, you know, once you move the EBL forward to the seven-point-eight line, you know, would you normally be allowed a projection beyond that line now that that? So we just want to clarify that was a further variance. And that, that's all that I re-submitted. Again, the drawings did not change at all.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Now, now, we will take questions from the council. And remember, the questions, which can be posed to the applicant, Levine's, or the town attorney. The questions are regarding whether, basically whether or not to hold the hearing tonight, not on the, on the very, on the, the, whether or not you're gonna approve the variance. So with that, Mr. Council President, Sirko, do you have any questions?
Thank you very much, yes. One question is with, so this is, I guess this is for the architect, Bellademas, Mr. Bellademas. The, the application says, I'm, because I'm trying to understand, they're talking about variances and requests for variances and the timing for it. The project description in the application says the proposed bay window on the rear is allowable under section, blah, 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 the town code, and therefore does not require a variance. Yet what I've been hearing, being discussed, is that the bay window does require a variance.
The one on the rear doesn't, but the one on the front does. There's a, there's a three-by-ten bay window on the, on the front of the house. That is within the setback.
Okay, let us mention the project description, thank you. I must confess, this, so, when did you start on this project, Mr. Bellademas?
Last, late last fall.
Right. So what, in, in those nine or ten months, what prevented or made it difficult to submit this by the fifteenth of last month?
It's a difficult lot, and it required a lot of design back and forth to get to something that we felt, and the, you know, Jamie and Dudley felt was in scale and respectful to all the neighbors. It was just a lot of design effort in that time.
Okay. Lastly, I'm, and this might be for the folks, but I'm a little concerned by the comments about, you know, if you don't accept this, things will be, will be worse. From your perspective, I guess from the folks' perspective, what is that, do you know what that comment is referencing?
Well, I'd say it was mischaracterized, perceived as a threat. And I think what, what I said was, I suggested that it might be better to get the variance, because if we can't build up toward the front, we would have to build up a little bit further back. And, and possibly closer to the property line, which I was just, I was just basically assuming that, that if they were gonna not, you know, oppose what we're doing now, they were gonna, what, they were gonna have more issue. I honestly, I don't think it's gonna be worse. I didn't mean to say it's gonna be worse, but I don't think it's gonna be bad at all. But, but I was offering them that perhaps it wouldn't be as good if it was moved. It would be, it would be even more visible if it was moved back. And that, so, I don't see that, that as a threat at all.
And when I met with the Levine's, my comment was that a compliance solution that didn't require the variance would be farther towards the south, which would block afternoon sunlight in a way that the variance, the second floor is, is smaller in relation to the first floor. And the variance pushes it forward, which allows more sunlight into those windows and into the rear yard versus a compliance solution.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Barr, do you have any questions? You need to mute, Councilmember Barr, you need to unmute, thank you.
All right, first of all, of Jamie and Dudley, could you give me more detail on the cost to you of this application being continued a month? Right, you, you have a second house, are there, are there costs of, associated with that second house?
You mean, are there costs associated with the house we're living in now?
No, you're, I guess it's your house and falls to him. And the issue is, does a later completion of this work cost you money because of that falls-in-house?
Yes, yes, I mean, we're, we're paying for two houses every, every month that this goes on. If that, if that's your question, am I understanding correctly? And I, we're concerned, since we need to do this variance and then go to the, then go to the county, then come back for the full building permit, we are just concerned that delaying here a month, certainly more than a month, is gonna have a snowballing effect, and we're just gonna, you know, then be asked to delay again, and I, you know, I, we're just worried that it's gonna keep going on and on. So, and we're, we're, there are costs, you know, all the time to us.
All right. And it's also just uncertainty, that's a, that's a cost, to labor in going forward in uncertainty for, for at least for another month. And, and then I, I just have a feeling that this is, we're not hearing the end of these complaints anytime at all. So, so I just, we're, we're, we're concerned about the uncertainty, about when we can pick up again, about losing progress, and that all adds up to costs.
Yeah, and we just feel like it's really important to get into the meat of this and be able to actually hash out the issues that are going to have an impact on us and our neighbors, as opposed to delaying and delaying.
Okay, I've got a question also Levine's too. I have not yet heard an objection to the variance. I've heard an objection to the timing presentation now, that you haven't enough time to consider it. And I've heard objections to the plan itself, which is that it will block light to the windows, but I see nothing in the variance request that would block light to the windows. And in fact, as it's been explained, the variance request allows more light to your windows than if the variance is not allowed. So do you have a specific objection to the variance request?
Yes. Well, go ahead.
We, in, in truth, as we've tried to explain, because of this position that they've taken with us, that if they don't get the variance, it's going to be worse for us. We've been trying to understand exactly, we've been trying to understand that. But we're not sure we want it, we don't want to take their word for that. So we've been struggling to try and understand, but it seems quite clear to us that this variance, the, the, I mean, you can see the window that we're talking about here, the variance that pushes this thing, this, this, this wall that's gonna be twice the size of their existing house, and it's going to block the very focal point of our home. And the, right there at the front of that big window is gonna be, if it's pushed forward these eight feet, that gets blocked. If it's back eight feet, they don't get the variance, it may not be as bad. Now, they say it's going to be worse, we're not so sure about that. But we need to speak to an architect or to someone who can advise us, we're, we're still trying to analyze it. So if we're pushed to take a position on the variance today, we will absolutely say, we object. It's pushing the blocking of our air and our light, and the privacy issue is profound. They are gonna have a porch on the top of their first story that's above the bottom of that window. They stand on their porch, they're looking directly into our space. This is our main living area, we're here day and night. They're looking directly in, off their porch, or from their bedroom. It's not the, it may not be quite the same without the variance. So we're struggling with it, we don't like it at all. They've said it's gonna be worse if they don't get it. We don't know for sure, but if we had to take a position today, for sure, we would object. And there's a lot of other reasons, a lot of other reasons that.
Right, thank you. That's all my questions.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Heller, do you have any questions? You're muted, Councilmember, you're muted. You're muted. Councilmember, you're muted.
I have to say that, that I, I, I feel for both parties. You know, I know you're both in a tough position. And I'm very sympathetic to both sides of this, I have to say. And I wish we weren't here. But for the Levine's, do you have someone that you're, that you're already gonna hire that's can help you out with this? If we don't, if we don't hear the variance issue tonight, do you have somebody on hand that you can, can begin to work with? Is this in, or are you just, you know, working on getting somebody to work with you to figure this out? You're muted.
It's the latter. This is, we, we spent Thursday and Friday, most of Thursday and some of Friday, much of Friday, at the hospital. That's what we've been doing and that takes most of our time. You know, we're willing to work with the folkses in, in getting, as she says, to the meat of this. We're willing to talk to them and do that, but we don't want to do it with the sort of Damocles here. We don't want to do it with a variance already having been awarded. When you say you feel for both parties, while I appreciate that, the code provides you the relief. It puts the burden on the applicant. The, this is for a variance. The general standard proposition is you have to build within the code. And you only can go outside the code if you get a variance. And you can only get a variance if you can show good cause. And they haven't done any of that. What they've done, what they, what they, their burden to show good cause, they have to show why they need a pantry that's, that's nine feet by 11 feet. They have to show why they need a workshop. They have to show why they need things of this size. Or is there something minimally, something that is less intrusive that will do? Because the code tells us they're required to do what is minimally intrusive. That's what they have to do. So you can feel relieved of, of, of the feelings because the code tells us how to resolve that.
Well, thanks, thanks for that Barry, but I don't, I'm not, I don't feel relieved, okay? Because I hear, I hear both of you and I get it. You know, we all, we all kind of fear for the knockdowns in the neighborhood and what it's gonna do to our neighbors left and right. So we hope for a renovation. So you got a renovation, which is pretty cool. But it'd be great if you guys could hammer this out without us all having to do it. But I understand that's hard.
Well, if you're talking about our, if you're talking about our renovation,
We're not gonna do that now Barry.
This is an opportunity.
I'm done.
An opportunity to ask questions, not have a debate.
All right, I'm done.
We just misunderstood, we just misunderstood what you were saying, but that's okay.
I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Councilmember Kumar, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Slaven. I have a question, set of questions for Barry and Laura and then the applicant and then the town manager. Barry and Laura, first of all, thank you for making time to be here and I'm very sorry to hear about your son. Thank you for sharing that with us.
Thank you.
I wanted to understand, it sounds like to me you've been in conversations with your new neighbors for a while. When did you first hear of Jamie and Dudley's plans?
Well, when they first bought the house, they came over, we talked. And, and that's when they, not they, Dudley, it wasn't, it wasn't Jamie, it was Dudley, who gave us some, some comfort by saying that, don't worry, we're not gonna build higher than your house. We're not gonna build higher than your house. He intuitively understood that this was a very intrusive possibility. And he gave us the assurance that he wasn't. And it wasn't until this package was sent to us last week that for the first time, for the first time, they sprung on us that they were gonna do this massive reconstruction that they're going to build from lot line to lot line, east and west, right as close to the line as is possible to the border on both sides. And, and they're going, and we see that they're going to make hardscape on the vast majority of the lot. And they're going to, in addition, seek this variance in order to build structure beyond the established boundary lines.
Got it. Barry, just a quick follow-up. I appreciate that. So since the time they bought the house, which was, I believe, a year ago.
About a year, yes.
Since then, you've had no discussions with them until you saw the package last week?
That's right. They, they never, no substantive conversations. We see them passing, we see him in passing.
Well, I should, I mean, we, we've been quite, we, we, we want nothing more than to be friendly with them. We tried very hard to be friendly and we even invited them. We wanted, eagerly wanted them both to come into our home so that they could see what they're gonna be affecting. And Dudley did one day come in.
Reluctantly, but he came, but she never did.
And we had that one conversation where he said, you know, don't worry about us. We're very sensitive to all this mansionization. We're very sensitive. We're not gonna do anything that upsets you. We promise we're not gonna go higher than your house. We had a number of very friendly interactions and we really genuinely are distraught over this.
So they, they promised they wouldn't go higher than the house and they, you believe that they are going higher than the house?
They definitely are. They're going 12 feet higher.
They're going to double the height of their house.
I appreciate that. And Barry, have you had, and Laura, have you had access to the architect at all in this process?
Yes, yes.
So you, when, when, you, you, and you have spoken to him and shared your views with the architect?
On Friday.
On Friday. And, and on Friday, he wrote to us and he, and he said, and I read from his email, quote, "The ridge peak of the existing gable facing your, yours is 12 foot 6 inches high. So the proposed new ridge peak is essentially double that height." So when I tell you that they're gonna, the house is gonna be twice as high as, will become twice as high as the current house, it's because the architect has told us that.
Okay. So I want to repeat what you told us, that the bulk of the information you received about this house was over the past week. And between the time the house was bought and until over a week ago, you've not received much information about the house. Is that, just to be 100% clear?
Absolutely, absolutely. We understood they were working on it. We knew they were working on it, but we rested assured that we'd been reassured by Dudley that it wasn't gonna be anything that would be upsetting to us. So we were stunned.
Okay. I have a set of questions. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. For the applicant, for Lou, Jamie and Dudley. I, I'm assuming Lou, you're going to be responding to those questions, but happy to hear from Jamie and Dudley as well. I just wanted to reconfirm from your side what Barry and Laura just mentioned, that you've had minimal interaction with them about your plans until the package was submitted over a week ago.
That's correct for me, yes. I, package went out. And then I met with them on Friday.
But. Okay.
I would like to talk, when you give me a chance later, I would like to rebut some of what they said.
I, I'm, I'm open to your reactions to what they said.
It's twice the height of the lower ridge of the house, not twice the height of the house. The house is a split level. The ridge that's facing towards them is 12 feet 6 inches tall. And we're doubling that, we're not doubling the ridge, the higher ridge of the split level.
Got it.
And the doubling to 25 feet is still 10 feet within the allowable height limit. So, you know, the, I, I do feel like it's being mischaracterized as a massive addition side to side. Bulk of what we're proposing for the second floor is 17 feet away from the lot line, plus the eight feet to their house. It's 25 feet away. And it's only 21 feet wide. I was avoiding getting into the details because it's just about the.
No, all of that is clear, all of that is clear, clear to me from, from the package that has been shared with us. I, I wanted to understand, you know, what efforts, if any, have you, Jamie, you and Dudley, you've taken to accommodate your neighbors? I have an impression that you have taken some measures, but I don't have a clear sense of what you have done to accommodate them and the discussions you've had with them. Free, feel free to add any color to that. You're very welcome.
Well, let, let me talk to first because you have something to say. They, it's true. Laura did invite me over several times to, to stand in her kitchen and look at her window and tell, and, and I was reluctant to do it, as Barry points out. Because I just felt like she really had a predetermined way she was trying to get me to feel. And, and I felt like really in conflict, I felt like she was just looking at it from her point of view and not from my point of view at all. And there were two points. I was, I went there at her request so that I would could, as best I could, absorb her point of view. And I think that was really important. As far as when I quote unquote, made a promise to, to, to them, I, I just would never make a promise to someone on the day of our closing when I, they said I came over. And the fact is, we're in the middle of our closing and they showed up and distracted attention from me and tried to extract this promise, which they thought they were hearing a promise from me that I was not gonna build higher than their house, which first of all, I would never make that, that promise. Second of all, I'm not even, I'm not even allowed to, to make that promise. I couldn't, I'm not, don't have the authority to make that promise. And third of all, so it was under duress, coerced. And third of all, what I said was not what they think I said.
Okay, that, I appreciate that Dudley. Jamie, you wanna add something to that? I sent you.
I just wanted to add, you had asked, you had just asked what, what measures we took to try to be, to their concerns? Because we were aware of their concerns and, you know, short of not adding anything onto that side of the house, at, you know, there wasn't just a first floor, which is, is a restriction that, that felt over burdensome to us. So we, we weren't, this is what we came up with after going back to the drawing board at extensive cost to us with our, we were getting it from that side the whole time. Don't go too, don't do this, don't, don't go too high. So we literally, we came, we worked with our architects, came up with a plan. We looked at it. It was gonna be too big. It was gonna be too big on both sides, too big for the street, too high. We knew it would really upset Barry and Laura. We trashed it. Went back to the drawing board at expense to ourselves. Lou and his team can confirm. We said, we gotta get this thing down. We gotta pull it away from the property line. We gotta keep the existing split level. And we gotta do something that's consistent with the scale and size and style of this, really of this street. And so we did. So we dialed everything back. We pulled it in. We, we, we pulled it in from their property line. You know, I think we all, understanding what goes on in, in this neighborhood and others, it could be 35 feet high right at the property line, but it's very, very far from that. So we made these decisions with a lot of design labor going into it. And yeah, we didn't go over and check with them at every turn because we really didn't feel that was gonna be productive, nor was that our responsibility. And we could kind of see where things are going, but we really tried hard to be sensitive to this issue. And this is what we came up with and you know, they say they're shocked. I'm, I'm kind of shocked by the amount of reaction that we're getting, given how much effort we have put into this.
Thank you, thank you, Jamie. Thank you. Let me play back what I heard from you. Barry and Laura were saying that since the first, since the closing, they've not really heard details about your plans. You're saying even you are aware of their concerns and you've done everything you can to accommodate that. And you believe you, you are proposing something quite modest compared to what was originally possible on that lot. Keeping in mind these concerns. I'm just playing back what I heard from you.
Yes.
Okay, I have last question, Mayor Slaven, for the town manager. Matt, was, were there any delays since you received the materials in getting the materials, informing Barry and Laura about this application? Were there, you know, were there any extraordinary delays? Were you able to turn around things? I'm assuming you were the one sharing with them and informing them. Do you recollect any extraordinary delays or exceptions in getting that information to them in a timely manner?
Not extraordinary. I think they reached out to me the first, like at the end of the first week of July, so maybe on the 8th or 9th. And I think I, I got back to them that Monday or, or early on Tuesday.
Saying what? Saying what?
Saying all of the requirements that they needed for the variance package.
Okay. No, I mean Barry and Laura, when did they hear from you?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And were there any delays between when you got everything and getting the information done? Because that's the question in front of us.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question. So the, so the applicants put together their, their application and submitted it to us on the 22nd. And part of my response to them was that they needed to inform all of the neighbors. And so Dudley had sent an email out that included all of the plans to all of the neighbors. And I understand he also had a conversation with the Levine's on the 22nd.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rovak, do you have any questions?
Um, yeah, I was just wondering from the town attorney, he had said that, you know, that side gets due time or whatever that is. Like, so what is the time that someone should be allowed that notification? I mean, is it from the 15th? Or is it from, like, how, how much time should, should someone be given for this?
Sure. So that the code doesn't specify how much time has to be given. We look to case law to determine what's sufficient notice under principles of due process. And the town code provides that, you know, a hearing is held after due notice. After, you know, the variance is considered after duly noticed hearing. You know, generally speaking, I would say 10 days is, is sort of a minimum. You know, 10, 10 to 15, 10 to 30 days is a standard window, 10 days being the minimum.
Okay. And so what are like the, what would the process be if this were to delay? You know, so that it wouldn't necessarily go until next month's review. But, you know, if we were to delay to the appropriate amount of time, that would be fair for all parties. Like, are we able to do that or no?
Yes, you're able to schedule a special council meeting, a special hearing to hear the variance. And that could be, you know, done anytime between now and, and the next regularly scheduled meeting.
And to the Levine's, you know, I'm, I too, I'm very sorry to hear the news about your son. If you were given, you know, another week or so on this, does that, is that enough time for you?
I think you need to unmute, Matt.
Is that, am I unmuted?
Yeah.
Yeah. Honestly, honestly, a week is really not, not enough time for us. And I mean, it, it's, that's all I can say. From a human perspective, we, we, we find this overwhelming to the, to analyze all of this and to understand what, even just to understand how it's gonna impact us. And, you know, the line, we have to figure out the line of sight. This issue, one of the key, key, key issues here that we really believe this variance would allow them to have a direct line of sight. And we have this trapezoidal window that we can't put a blind on. So we have, and it's, and it's, and they're looking directly in from their porch and from their bedroom, directly from an elevated position, directly into our main living space. And we have no ability to, we called someone to see, I mean, just independently of this, I mean, we called to see if we could get a blind on that window. We cannot. So we're on, our privacy is utterly unprotected. And we feel like, what is an undue adverse impairment of our enjoyment if not that? What, and, yeah, if not that, if not that. And so we, but we need to, you know, we need to be able to prove, right? We need to bring, bring evidence to this hearing. So we need to have, be able to prove that the line of sight is such, there's like physics work we have to do. There's, there's so much that we have to do. We spoke with the solar, we, we are in the process. Physics work we have to do, there's there's so much that we have to do, we spoke with the solar, we we are in the process of putting solar panels on the house, we asked the guy today, he happened to come. About the effect of this on our solar panels, he said he'd get back to us, we have the issue of, I mean, I we listed some of them in the letter, but it's it's extensive. It's extensive and and. So and we have our son.
Yeah, I mean, I I feel like. Well. You know, there's a lot of, you know, different circumstances around, but there's just like never enough time because, you know, at the same time. You know, you guys are trying to get your plans moving forward and, you know, I do agree that. That, you know, with the the way that the code is written. You know, it becomes the burden of the people that are trying to. Not follow the code. However, you know, from the time period allotted, you know, I don't know if.
So Councilmember Rovak, before you start going into discussing the issue, do you have any further questions of the applicant? The Levine's, the town manager, or the town attorney?
No.
Because you'll have an opportunity to discuss all that, so. Okay, so thank you, so at this point. We will close this portion of the hearing and I will ask. The town attorney to identify what is the question that the council must answer now. And have have discussion and make a decision.
One moment, sir rebuttal.
Uh, yeah, I just.
Hold on. Hold, I don't.
Can I?
I think that it's.
Just responding. Sorry, can I just?
Is that would is that would that be allowed? For the rebuttal?
At the discretion of the council.
Okay, I assume they would like to hear it, okay, go ahead.
I just want to briefly respond. Is that what? Is it me?
Go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to respond briefly to what Councilmember Rovak just said, I appreciate. The idea of a of a a meeting, if if it is to be postponed of a meeting, I don't want it to be postponed, but if it is a meeting sooner than a month, because. If we had submitted it on the fifteenth, they would have had. Two weeks and two days to look at it and that would have been perfectly within the bounds as opposed to the. Ten days that they've had, so. You know, just like every every other. Person in Somerset, you know, they may have had that two week window, so we can, you know, I think that that's a fair proposal, so I appreciate it anyway.
Okay, thank you, so at this point, Mr. Town Attorney, would you please again refresh everyone's memory as to what is the purpose of this? Preliminary hearing and then the council will debate and make a decision.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, so. Under the town code. The council can decide whether to allow a late procedure to be followed. For the presentation of this variance request and have that hearing this evening. Or to disallow the hearing request for late process and I read the. The factors previously, the council weighs in its discretion. Reasons for the late filing. Need for expedition. Nature, extent and complexity of the work proposed to be performed. Effect upon adjoining and confronting properties. Extent of prior notice to interested persons. Actual or likely opposition. And hardship to the applicant.
Okay, thank you, so before I open up for discussion is, I always ask, is the council, is anyone on the council prepared to make a motion?
I think we need to discuss.
I think the president is.
Um. May I? I have a motion in mind, but I don't know if we want to.
Well, you can make the motion and if someone wants a second, then you'll be able to debate it. At least we'll give you the basis for the discussion.
I move that we postpone the hearing on the various requests. Until we can hold a special council meeting later this month of August. For just that purpose.
Is there a second? Councilor Hell, a second discussion. Mr. Town Manager, you can open up all the. Council.
Steve. Yeah, I have a. Perspective, you know. I'm not sure if. A few more weeks is going to fundamentally change the nature of what we are dealing with here. Based on the discussion we've just had. I think at the heart of it is a home that is going to obstruct. Barry and Laura's view. Or the light coming in from their windows. And I I think. That hardship figures in our discussion on whether we. Move forward with the permit and the variance discussion, it's. You know, it really doesn't figure in whether we delay. The discussion. So I rather we get into discussing the variance application today and consider their. You know, the points they've made as part of that. Rather than delay it any further, I don't think fundamentally it's going to change much. Where we are in this in this discussion right now.
Well.
Go ahead.
If I can comment for a moment and then maybe other folks point in. I suspect you're right, Kavir, that. As a practical matter. You know, the the application won't change and we'll be dealing with those details. Another week or two instead of tonight. But I think that the process is important and the. Criteria for. A late cement or an expedited hearing like this. The way I'm interpreting it is that. Basically, there will be no impact on the neighbors and the neighbors agree if there's no impact, so it's all okay. But clearly, there's a neighbor that's concerned and wants to evaluate it more and wants a little bit more time. And that seems reasonable to give them telling.
No, I I'm my I'm of the view that. I'm not sure the neighbors will have a, you know, an updated perspective than what they've shared today.
They might not.
That's that's the impression I'm getting from our discussion. Tonight and we will be having the same substantive conversation with a two week delay. You know, instead of having it tonight. So that's my interpretation of the conversation that has happened today.
Okay, so that's that's all you wanted to say about the motion, correct? Okay, thank you, Councilor Heller, I think you want to say something.
I I I respectfully disagree with you, Kavir, I think the Levine's. Need some time to pull in some professionals. And get some questions answered and maybe. You know, we'll all maybe their perspective will be different or maybe there's a good way to give and take when they're done. Having their professionals in and I think they deserve to have those, if we're gonna do two weeks, then they get two weeks and I think we should give that to them.
Well, what I mean is, what I.
I'm just supportive of Steve's motion.
What I'm saying is that they will have professionals. And now the professionals would say it is tall and. It's obstructing the view of those windows and then we will be using that information in our discussion. It's not going to fundamentally change the substance of their concern. And I frankly think, given everything they've shared about their personal life, we might be doing them a favor. By dealing with this sooner rather than later. But I'm I'm as. I'm happy to be the minority view, but I think we will. We need to discuss the specifics of the application. I have not heard anything that makes me think that this this needs to be delayed any further.
Okay, Councilor Barr, I think you want to say something.
Yeah, I I'm not sure two weeks is enough, I think about a month is right actually, but. There are some specifics that need to be resolved and I think. That. I the the Levine's have expressed that there is a real threat to their privacy coming from the construction. Whereas. The other side, Jamie and and Dudley and. Lou have said they have designed it to minimize any threat to privacy. And I really want that to be resolved. I and I think, you know, I I it's maybe Lou talking to 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 Barry and Laura. Is the right thing to do or have all three of you, Jamie and Dudley and Lou talk to Barry and Laura. To thrash out exactly how perspectives will change with this construction. And you might you you might want an architect involved, Barry and Laura, yourself as as part of it to give you professional expertise. And I think you need a month to set that up, I honestly do, but so that that is that is the guts of it, that's that's where the the difference is. And if you can resolve that in a month, it will make our job a whole lot easier. I don't want to vote on it tonight because I don't know the answer to that.
Um, but I mean, at the end of the day. You know, really, the code is written as such that there's certain allotments for setbacks, so. You know, giving them a month, I mean, there the construction is still not following the codes of the neighborhood.
I well, the the I did see. On that block of Grantham on that side of the street. It doesn't seem to be a single house. That is within the thirty that that follows the thirty three. Back. Including the Levine's own house. There isn't one. So that it does seem that the setback is a little bit exaggerated on on that on that side. It is the case that the. House, when extended on the front, will only go to the point where the. Wing that is being left. Untouched. Current that is the point of the twenty five point five feet setback and just bringing the rest of the house up to that point. But in doing that. The Levine's are concerned that with the second floor is then going to give a view into their trapezoidal windows. I don't know if that's true. And I think that needs to be sorted out and that's. Why I'm saying it probably needs a month to sort it out and that's that's what I'm going for, but there is a single house on that street that that follows the.
But Robin, isn't what we are just discussing the discussion of the application, not? When it should be discussed, you know, we could have this discussion on the application right now.
No, we couldn't because I'm missing information.
You you are, that would be your input to that.
The the motion is whether or the the motion is regarding scheduling. The hearing, not the merits of the variance.
Exactly. And what we what we've just discussed is the merits of the.
You're opposed to the motion. Is there further discussion on of the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 So I see three eyes and four eyes and. Are you are you voting, Councilor Kavir Kumar?
The the motion is way too nonspecific for me to vote on, I'm so sorry, it says sometimes later this month, that is absolutely unacceptable. As a motion to me to vote on.
You can propose an amendment.
The council's voting, the council's voting now, so are you voting for?
Against postponing it.
So at this point. Are there any are there any further motions? Mr. Town Attorney. Is is that decision? Clarifying enough for the staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, so the. Calendars will have to be consulted in order for a date to be chosen for later this month, which.
That's why I left it. Somewhat thin.
Okay. Right, yeah, a lot of calendars to compare.
Okay, so thank you, everyone. The decision has been made, thank you for your participation. We will see you all again soon. The next item on the agenda, public hearing motion to consider adoption of ordinance number four twenty one two. And ordinance to amend the code of ordinances to allow administrative approval for the replacement of air conditioning units and heat cool pumps. Mr. Town Manager.
This code amendment was introduced at the previous council meeting. In summary, it essentially. Allows it for the replacement of an HVAC unit to be replaced. In the exact same location. Administratively, as opposed to going before the council for a vote.
Okay, thank you, Council. President Circo, do you have any questions?
No questions, thought to bring this forward.
Thank you, Councilor Barr, do you have any questions?
It's one tiny point only, which is that it says that the mayor will send. Notice to neighbors by first class mail. And. That's not the best way to contact them, it really isn't, and I'm sure the mayor is well aware of that and will probably use email. As the residents may not be home at a particular time that the the mail arrives. So I would propose. An amendment.
Why would you what? Why don't you ask the town attorney and then you can offer an amendment? Why did you ask the town attorney about that provision, maybe there's a maybe there's a legal reason. Why we use first class mail, yeah, okay. Yeah. And in Canada, he amended.
Sure, so the reference there to first class mail. Is to clarify by what means notice will be sent in case there's. A contest or, you know, debate as to what notice should be sent, so we we clarify that this is how we're going to do it. That's the minimum. The mayor always has the option of doing more than the code requires. So, you know, if the if the mayor has the email addresses, he could send a courtesy copy by email as well. But, you know, in in the code, we we want we want to have at least a minimum. Which. Serves two purposes, one specifies what the minimum is and two avoids a debate as to whether. You know, we should be sending by certified mail, restricted delivery, return receipt requested, so on so forth.
Uh, I mean, I'll I'll let it pass, but we need to rethink, I mean.
Well, you could.
It's a very old way of communication, we need to do better than that.
Councilor Barr, Councilor Barr, why don't you consider? An amendment that the town attorney can help you craft. Right now, tonight, at the time.
Sure, I mean, it it it's an amendment, it, you know, the mayor will contact. All neighbors expeditiously by the most appropriate means is really what I'm trying to say.
Okay. So so when at the time that. The amendment is being considered, the this amendment to the this ordinance is being considered. Perhaps you will add an amendment to it.
Sure.
To and but did you have any other questions besides that one?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I could make a suggestion just to help maybe expedite the matter, so I I wouldn't want to say. The the most expeditious manner deemed practical because that that's where we we run into trouble because someone will have a different argument as to what's. Most expeditious or practical, so we we need to be. Clear, but maybe we change it to say notice by first class mail and email if. The neighbors have provided an email address that is included in the, you know, the town directory.
And email.
Well, when the ordinance is being considered, you will work with Councilor Barr to come up with the legal language.
Right.
But and but Councilor Barr, you have no other questions?
No other questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Thank you, Councilmember Kumar.
No questions.
Thank you, Councilor Rovak.
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are there any comments or quests? Questions from our residents or guests?
Kumar Vaswani has raised his hand, I don't know if this if it's on this issue or another one.
Yes, thank you, Matt, it was actually for the previous issue, but since you asked me, I think it needs to be my mail. First class mail with the option of email as well, I think you're gonna have to do that at least for the next decade until. You know, the rest of us dinosaurs die off because some people don't have email. And sometimes emails get put into spam or they get lost frankly, and. The post office has traditionally been the sort of standard. You know, official way of notifying people, so that's.
Sometimes people are not home at by time. When the mail arrives.
Well, the mail will wait for them until they get home.
After.
Perhaps when they get home.
The town attorney will be able to work with Councilor Barr to also address your concern. Your excellent concern, Mr. Vaswani. Did you have any other, did you have anything else you wanted to ask? I guess he won, I guess, I guess. We'll make sure you, his concerns addressed. Is that the only resident that wished to speak, Mr.?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Council, are you prepared to make a motion? Councilor Barr, do you want to make the motion with your amendment?
Sure. I move that we approve the ordinance, uh, for four twenty-one-two to allow administrative approval for the placement of air conditioning units and heat pumps. With an amendment to add email as a means of reaching the neighbors.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Town Attorney, do you want to specify the language so it can be in the record?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So.
It will make sure it's acceptable to the mover of the motion.
So on, on page three of the draft, paragraph B is in boy where it says the mayor sends written notice by first-class mail will add and email if
If available, it surely is.
If an email address is contained in the town directory or, or, and email to the address, if any, in the town directory.
Is that, Councilor Barr, is that?
That's appropriate. That's good.
Does that satisfy? And I think that addresses Mr. Vaswani's concern. So is there, is there further discuss, the, the motion has been made and seconded. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed. Thank you very much. Next item, public hearing motion to consider approval of a shred event with shredding machine truck and battery collection at the town hall parking lot on Saturday, September eighteenth, as requested by Phyllis Wiesenfelder and recommended by the Town Environment Committee. Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, uh, I think the, you, you all have the information. The, the only thing I, I will add is that, um, the Environment Committee has also, uh, arranged if, if this event is approved for the Montgomery County Department of Environmental Protection to also do, uh, LED light bulb exchange during the shred event as well.
Okay. Thank you. Council President Circa, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bar.
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Heller. You're muted. Do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kumar.
No questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Rovak.
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are there comments or questions from our residents or guests?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
I, I can do it. Motion to consider approval of a shred event with shredding machine truck and battery collection at the town hall parking lot on Saturday, September eighteenth. Um, and what was, Matt?
The light, light bulb exchange with the Montgomery County.
In, including light LED bulb exchange with Montgomery County.
Thank you. Is there a second? I saw Barr first. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Thank you. The next item, public hearing motion to consider approval of a town sanctioned pickleball demonstration at the basketball court at Capella Park at a cost not to exceed five hundred dollars. Mr. Town Manager.
Yes. Um, so this request was, uh, some, some residents on a private listserv had started discussion on this issue. The tennis committee had then done some preliminary research into the issue and recommended a separate space from the tennis courts for a demonstration. And I believe the mayor, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Mr. Mayor, but has, uh, has spoken with some residents in town who are willing to put on a demonstration for residents on the basketball courts.
Well, remember at the, at the, um, at the work session, there is a, there's a gentleman, isn't it in?
The Rosenberg.
There's a gentleman that
Oh.
Isn't the council that information? That, uh, it's an employee of the, um, anyway. I, I think we discussed all this at the, at the work session. There's a pickleball pro that's going to come.
It's not Matt, right? It's not Matt Trelinger who will be doing the pickleball. I know he's very good at pickleball.
Unless he gets certified by them, but yeah, it's a, it's a pickleball professional. The, the purpose of having this on the agenda is because there's an expenditure of funds.
But does this cost money?
Because a professional costs money to put on a demonstration. Anyway, is that, that concludes your presentation, right? Yeah. Council President Circa, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Barr.
No questions.
Thank you. Now, Councilmember Heller.
All right. I spoke at a turn. I'm sorry. No question.
No problem. Did you have any other questions?
Oh, no, no, I said, no, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Kumar.
I, I have a question. And I'm sorry, I also spoke out of turn earlier, but is there, is this in, are we you know, approving this for sort of indefinitely? Is there a date set, a time period in which this will happen or?
I think the discussion was that it would be in September.
Okay, okay. No, no more questions.
Thank you. Councilor Rovak, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are there any comments or questions for our residents or guests?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Hearing none. Are you prepared to make a motion? Council.
I move that we approve a pickleball demonstration be held at the basketball court in September, most likely.
Second.
Is there a second? Rovak, thank you. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The next item, public hearing motion to consider approval of a town forum on Thrive Montgomery twenty fifty at a date to be determined in late Sep, August, early September. I think that Matt proposed that it be in September. And we are still working on the details.
Yeah, we, we had, uh, at the council meeting discussed either Monday, September thirteenth or Tuesday, the fourteenth. Um, there was some discussion on the council about a possibility of holding it earlier. Um, so that's why I wasn't specific about the, um, about the date to leave that, leave that discussion open for the council.
Okay. Thank you. Council President Circa, do you have any questions?
No questions. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Councilmember Barr, do you have any questions?
I, I, I agree with the need for this and I've got no questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Heller, do you have any questions?
No, just a comment. I, I'd like to be, make sure we're very respectful of the Jewish holidays that are coming. So we get maximum participation. A lot of Jewish holidays in September.
Well, I don't think the
Excellent point.
I don't think there are Jewish holidays on thirteenth or fourteenth.
Well, um.
Well, we'll consult with you. Don't, we'll consult with you.
Thank you.
We'll consult with the council before we, because it's a whole matter of finding the right panelists and their schedule. Councilmember Kumar, do you have any questions?
No questions. I'm very glad you're doing this.
Thank you. Councilmember Rovak, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are there comments or questions for our residents or guests?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
I can. Motion. Oh, you go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. I, I, I move that, um, we approve a town forum on Thrive Montgomery twenty fifty at a date to be determined in late August, early September.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I saw Heller first. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And last but not least, a public hearing motion to consider approval of the town pool remaining open through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, as recommended by the pool committee. Mr. Town Manager.
So the pool committee met on, uh, Thursday, the twenty-ninth and voted on this proposal. Um, as I noted in the packet to the council, the previous council, when this was considered, had allocated an extra roughly thirty thousand dollars for, so that this council could approve an extension without needing a budget amendment at this time. I also note that, uh, we have the pool committee chair, Matt Zaff here, who, um, I'm sure is willing to answer any questions that the council might have specific to this.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Council President Circa, do you have any questions?
Yes, I have a couple. Um, as regards to the budget, Matt, yes, the, the town council approved the additional funds. But it's my recollection, understanding that we dipped into those additional funds in order to cover pump repairs. Is that correct?
Uh, the pump, the pump repairs will come out of the capital, the capital budget for the pool. Um, we actually have not, uh, gotten the bill for that yet. So, uh, we haven't had to pay the piper, so to speak.
Okay. Um, did, did the pool committee give any rationale for extending the season an extra month? Unlike last year, there was the rationale was because the pool season, swim season started late, impact on, on children and families because of COVID. But we're coming out of that now and kids will be going to school. So what's the rationale?
Are you, are you asking the chair of the committee?
My guess, sorry, yes.
Yes.
To Matt Zaff.
Mr. Zaff, Chair Zaff. Certainly. Uh, Matt Zaff, Dorset Avenue, uh, Chair of the Pool Committee. Um, so yeah, so, uh, and just one sort of point of clarification that the pool committee has actually voted on this three times. Uh, all three times unanimously recommending it. Uh, we voted on it at our November twenty twenty meeting, recommending that it be, you know, and considered for this year. We voted on it again in February and recommended it. Um, and then we just reiterated the vote at our most recent meeting to get it on the agenda. And all three times, it, it's really about a combination of multitude of factors. Number one, uh, just continuing the outdoor availability for people to gather, for people to have a place to socialize in a safe manner. Um, the use of the pool from both a, you know, residence standpoint of enjoyment, kids in the shallow end, but also, you know, both kids and adults being able to swim laps and get exercise much longer into the year. Um, and most recently, we talked about the, the possibilities that, you know, we don't know what Delta is going to bring and we, we don't know what's around the corner with this variance and, and, you know, uh, as a Greek myself, a, you know, what's, is gamma coming? Um, and what else comes after that? And, and for those reasons, to have the ability to at least for one additional month, have, you know, the, the safe environment of the outdoor pool, um, which, you know, you would just have to look at Friday night to see just how many different people from, I'd say as young as six months to as old as ninety were enjoying the pool on Friday night. And it, it was really just a wonderful thing to see. And I think that that can continue throughout. Um, I would also point out that, you know, and, and this would be probably something for a different night, but there are several organizations that are interested in renting lanes from the pool, uh, in October that would offset some of the cost. Uh, there's actually several that are open to doing it year round. If we were to consider keeping the pool open even longer, where we would actually most likely net a profit for the town as Potomac Glenn did. So, you know, I think there's many reasons here to, to do this. Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Did you have further questions, Council President Circa?
Yes, please. First off, thank you, Matt. Appreciate the, the explanation in the background. Um, talking about attendance and use of the pool of, for Matt, do we have details on how many people, how many different residents used the pool last October when we have the extended season?
Yeah, I, I, I tried to pull that up this evening to give, to give you some sense. Um, so um, unfortunately, I, I haven't had an opportunity to, to, to really flesh out the data for you, um, a lot. So I don't know necessarily, um, how often it was, you know, re, repeat, uh, users of the pool, for instance, but, um, the, the pool usage sort of leveled out, I would say, in the second half of September. So it, the, it, it peaks in June, July, actually, and then dips a little bit in August as I, I assume maybe people are out, out of town and, and maybe on vacation. And it kind of stays lower and dips down again in September and kind of slowly goes downward and then sort of levels out about halfway through September. That's, that's sort of what we saw. And, and for, for reference, just to give you some kind of raw numbers, it's, it's, um, it's in the thirty to forty visits a day as opposed to seventy-five visits a day in beginning of September versus mid-October.
Thank you. Um, as another potential measure of interest in doing this, do you know how many residents, uh, signed up for lap swimming when we did, opened up the pool early this year?
I, I believe, and Matt, you, you may know as well, and, and actually Councilmember Heller might know as well. I believe that both the, um, both of the early morning swim, uh, all the, all the slots were filled for both of the.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Steve, are you asking about early bird swim or when we opened up for the week early, like where I paid the forty dollars to do?
Exactly. How many people?
I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry. Um, I, I'm sorry. I misunderstood your question, Council President Circa, so I, I don't have the information, um, handy.
Hold on, you'll get a chance.
Okay.
If I just explain my rationale.
Hold, hold on a second. Did Councilor Heller want to answer Councilor Circa, President Circa's question?
I, I wanted to jump in on that, whereas I don't have exact numbers, numbers for you, Steve, on when we opened early. I did watch it, you know, but, and it seemed that it was low. It was low for a reason. It was low because it was that you had to pay to swim, to swim laps. And I know avid, avid swimmers like myself didn't do it and it was really on principle. You know, I said, I'll wait a week and I'll, I'm not going to pay for this. Not that I couldn't, but I wouldn't. You know, and I think it was, it was not a lot of swimming. Matt did, Matt did swimming during that time. I think he could tell you more. What do you think, Matt?
Yeah. So I, I was going to say, I, I, you know, anecdotally think it was about ten people. Um, it might've been more than that, um, only because like I can only talk about the people that I saw. I will also point out that it was colder in May. That first week of May was abnormally cold. It was like we got the worst first week, you know, extra week of May we probably have seen in years. So I don't know if that had an impact on her as well. Um, but what I'll, flip side of that, what I will tell you is when I was there swimming laps, the, you know, quote unquote, free part, um, where in the shallow end, there were lots of kids. Um, and there were lots of adults. And that was one thing that I found really nice was I, I was there swimming laps and I, I would have no problem paying that forty-dollar fee personally. Um, I, I, you know, I, I'd pay it again to, to be able to swim and I'd pay it if you'd let me swim in November. Um, and, but, you know, that, there was a lot of kids that I didn't expect to see there that were. And then that made me feel good. President Circa, do you have any other questions?
Last question on the, on the budget for, um, Matt, uh, sorry, for Matt Trelinger, the town manager. Just, just to clarify the status on this year twenty-two budget, the budget that we're in. Now, I understand the money, uh, the previous council allocated or voted to approve some money for this purpose. But the result, as I recall, is that we're dipping into our But the result, as I recall, is that we're dipping into our unencumbered reserves. Is that correct or can you provide clarification?
Yeah, so the, the budget, the, the proposed FY twenty-two budget shows our unencumbered and total reserves both dropping. Our rainy day fund is staying steady. So, yeah, to answer your question, yes, the unencumbered reserves are, are going down from beginning of last year to this, beginning of this year.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Barr, do you have any questions?
Well, yeah, I mean, Matt, what do we lose, what do we gain if we only open it at weekends in October instead of continuously open?
So that's a tough one because you still have to pay to maintain the chlorine levels. You still have to pay to maintain the pump usage and everything like that. So really, the only cost saving there is not having the lifeguards on duty, the full staff during the week. And one thing to note is we would already be on school hours, so we're already at reduced lifeguard staff. One of the things we did last year, which I thought was a good idea and we could certainly do again this year, is we don't need five lifeguards during the day on October, which is, you know, something we have in July. We certainly could go down to two or three or, you know, so there are, there are certainly cost savings, but by just being open on the weekends, it's going to be not significant as far as, you know, because of all the costs that you incur just by having the pool open.
Okay, thank you. No more questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Heller, do you have any questions?
I'm more of a sort of really for Matt Trolinger. Well, I have two points. Matt, can we be assured that we can collect numbers this year? So we can like gather last year's numbers of people that swam if we keep it open through October? And this year, so we as a council can really look at this again to make sure that, that we're doing the right thing, you know, financially for the town. And, and the other thing I want to say is the Delta variant is here, guys. We're in trouble again. And maybe with the pool open, it will be a good thing for this town to have places to go, but we are right back in. And if you're not following that, I'm telling you, we are in trouble again. So I'd like to lobby this especially because of that.
To answer your question, yes, the software allows us to track. And I can, I can put it into an Excel spreadsheet that breaks down the, the total number of visits and break it down by unique visits, et cetera.
Just we need to have that information when we're having the same conversation again, you know, or when we, when we're having that conversation during budgeting, you know, to pull it up, to see if it's worthwhile. Okay? Thank you.
Did you, did you have any other questions?
No.
Thank you. Councilmember Kumar.
Yeah, I have a question for, for Matt's app. Matt, will you have other activities like the one we had this past Friday? In October, are you planning to do things to bring people to the pool outside of the swimmers, so to speak, given that lovely space we have there?
Yeah, so obviously assuming that this passes, absolutely. Couple of things. Number one, I would love if, if the, the committee that's already doing the Food Truck Fridays, the International Food Truck Fridays, just continued it through October. I, I think that's a great idea. I, I would love, you know, to have, you know, some other type of event. And, you know, we could even consider moving the joint newcomers and I forget what the other part, a town hall. I know it's the town hall opening, but you could have it like, you know, a, a traveling party. That was, where you travel, you know, you have a party at the town hall and then everyone travels down to the pool. So, you know, just different ideas, but yes, no, I mean, I would love to continue to have more events, provided we have the ability to do so.
Great. No more questions for me.
Thank you, Councilor Ray. Do you have any questions? You're muted.
Um, what, so what would the, the hours be then for that time period?
But so when we go to school, it's basically on Monday through Thursday, we go to one to eight. On Friday, we're, we're one to nine. Saturday, we're ten to nine. Sunday, we're ten to eight. So sort of think about it as like on a school night, we close at eight. And on Friday and Saturday, we close at nine, but Saturday and Sunday, we open up at ten. All other days, we open up at one. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, well, I mean, and, and also, I mean, you can go, if you wanted to have friends like out there for dinner like some night, I guess, provided that the grills work. You could go and do that. You don't necessarily have to swim either, right? We can just use that space or like, you know, with the Delta variant if, you know, people want to gather outside still.
Yep, exactly.
I have no other questions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest?
Yes, we have at least two questions. The first is Barbara Condos.
Councilmember Condos. Did you have a comment or question?
I do. Hi, there, I had unmute myself. Anyway, I just wanted to add that water aerobics continued through the October closing last year. So that was another use the pool was put to during that time period.
Thank you.
Is that it? Thank you. I, and I see that the distinguished Lucy Freeman wishes to speak.
Good. Well, I was gonna say the same thing that Barbara said, but also I raised this at our class today, water aerobics. You know, how many people are going to attend in October always depends upon the weather. If it snows, I think our numbers will be down, but people were interested in water aerobics till the pool closes again. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there further, Mr. Town Manager, anybody else?
Committee Chair Zaff may have wanted to make another comment.
Okay, um, sort of two comments. One, in, in, in the line of, of water aerobics. Also, last year, the early bird swimmers continued through October. We paid an additional fee, which we would be happy to do again for the month of October. And, and we had, you know, constant attendance throughout despite, you know, several mornings where the, the temperature began with a three. And, you know, we were still out there and, and using the pool. And so, you know, more than happy to, to keep that going as well. And we offset our own cost. The other thing I would say is that I, I do think it would be really wonderful if we could get the, the P and L and, and get a quote from American Pools on what it would cost to keep the pool open year round. I think that is something that should be seriously considered. I know it's.
Okay, well, that, that you can, that, that's something for your committee to chew on.
But we already did. I was gonna say that was something the committee already recommended on Thursday. It wasn't on the agenda tonight, but I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that at our committee meeting, we recommended that we get the P and L so that we can assess this because we now have three different organizations that are interested in renting lanes, which I think would not just, you know, offset any cost we would have, but would actually make the town some money. Not that we're in the business making money, but we can't do that until we know.
But that's not for tonight. Thank you very much. Is, is there any, are there further comments from our residents or guests? Hearing none, Council, you prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I, I what do I, how do we start this? I am.
It's.
Motion to approve.
Motion, I motion, thank you.
It's to keep the pool open.
Motion to, to keep the pool open through the end of October.
Is there a second?
Second.
I heard who, Councilor Kumar, is there discussion?
I mean, I'm going to support this, but I don't, you know, cost is a real issue. I know twenty-nine thousand was approved. We just do not know what our budget's going to be this coming year. And so, any, any thoughts you have, Matt, on, on renting it out and, and actually recovering some of the funds?
Okay.
And we, we'd love to hear more on them.
Well, that'll be for the future. Is there further discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. We are, we are discussing extending the opening of the pool until the end of October against a budget line item we already have. Is that right? There's nothing else being discussed right?
No, we, we've approved the money. We're having to use money from reserves to pay for it because we don't have.
Fine, fine. Sorry, I, I worded that incorrectly, but for, there, there was a previous approval. And now for the, for the budget, now we are considering whether we, there's no other discussion despite what Matt, wonderful ideas Matt just presented. There's no other discussion right now.
Right. The, the top, the topic is just that.
Great.
Is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed. Thank you. Excellent job, everybody. And our last agenda item tonight is the manager's report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple of budget items that I wanted to, or budget-related items that I wanted to flag. One is, you know, I'll, I'll let Lindsay and Associates that we've approved the contract tomorrow. We'll, we'll get started on the audit. We really can't finish it until, at the very least, September because bills trickle in that affect the, the previous fiscal year. And so by law, actually, we can't do it until sixty days after the fiscal year has ended. But my, my goal is to have the audit be completed and finished before the October council meeting, so that when I go for my wedding, that will be sort of behind us and we, we won't have that. The town will have, deal with that while I'm, while I'm away and, and celebrating. The, the second is with the, the Rescue Plan Act, the funds still haven't been received by the town. I, I sent a follow-up email to the state last week and on Thursday, they, they said it'd be ten, ten to fourteen days is what they estimated and that they, they were basically hung up because the guidance kind of kept, kept changing. But they said that they, they had our, they had our disbursement check in hand, actually. So I created a, a separate account in our Maryland Local Government Investment Program Fund specifically for the ARPA money to be, to be housed and to track it that way. And as we figure out how we spend it, that's the best, that's, that's the best in- interest accruing account that we have available to us at the moment as, as low as that is. But the good news is that whatever interest that we do accrue, however small that is, is not subject to the same strict criteria that the, the regular funds are. I've also been playing phone tag Garrett Park in a previous meeting that I had had with the other municipal, municipal managers in, in, in our area. They had had some loss of funds associated with, with COVID specific to, specifically you rental, rental fees being lost, think, things like that. And so they are somebody that like us has an opportunity to not just spend it on the specific projects that are outlined, but also to, at least in part, make up for some funds that were lost due to COVID. And so one of the things we, we were going to talk about is their plans for basically the administration of those funds. And because as we discussed at the council work session, there are a lot of legal hoops and governments, excuse me, federal governments, regulations that need to be worked around in order to spend this money legally and correctly. It may make sense for the town to consider hiring somebody using those funds to administer them and, and advise us on, on, on how to spend them. The last thing related to the budget is I've, I've started to kind of go through, through some things. I think in the next couple of months, I, I, I may have some budget line items to relook at that maybe need adjusting or need to think about how we're spending those, those monies. So nothing dire, but just kind of a regular housekeeping, regular housekeeping. I did want to update on the apiary situation. I've kind of gotten radio silence from Sarah Keel for the last couple of months. I have asked her specifically if she is still interested, if she would like to revisit it at a later time. And unfortunately, haven't heard back. Right now, I think the question for me is we're in the dog days of summer. Can we still do this? Or are, are we now forced to wait into the fall? And if we are, it might be a, a topic for the council to revisit about how best that that program might be administered. But on a, on a kind of a more fun note, I was talking to Donna Colley, who's doing our records retention project. And apparently back in the day, Somerset had a similar program where there were apiaries built on town property that were maintained by the town. And so I just thought it was kind of funny how history repeats itself. I have the, updated committee protocol sheet for, for you all to consider. I, I know it was a sort of a rough draft that I'd given to you before, so I think this is a little bit more complete and gives you all something more to consider. So our, our latest Pepco bill will reflect the one hundred percent renewable agreement with LGO that, that we had discussed before. I've reached out to Pepco to try to set up a meeting and provide more information on the costs of replacing the streetlights with LED, energy-efficient bulbs throughout town to get back into that conversation and see if that's the, the angle we want to take to, to upgrade our streetlights. In addition, for our existing streetlights, I, I wanted to thank again some of the members of the Public Safety Committee who had done a tour of a couple of the streets in town and sent over a list of lights that were either out or, or were obstructed in some way by trees or, or dirt and needed to be cleaned. And so Pepco reported to me last week that they, they fixed the broken streetlights and that they were contracting out the other work for branch trimming and the other things and expected that to be completed in the near future. And then I've also following up on that, and this was a discussion we had had to have Wayne C. Fowler, who is our code enforcement officer, who's done this work in some of his other towns to do a tour at nighttime of the town and report back by the second week of August. He actually sent me an email today that he had done one of the streets last Friday and had to get called home, so he, he didn't get as far as he was hoping. But in any case, I should have an update for you at the council work session. Couple exciting stormwater, stormwater movement. We, I met along with council members Barr and Kumar, who are the liaison and alternate liaison, respectively, with some members of the committee and, and Doug Lowmeyer to kind of pick his brain about some of the draft language and ways that we might improve it and to get a better understanding of that. And then in addition, the two council members I, I mentioned and myself met with Oyster Imus Petzel, who is the engineering firm that essentially serves Doug's role for the town of Chevy Chase. And similarly picked their brain about our proposal and tried to get a better understanding of the state's requirements, the county's requirements, the town's requirements, how they the town's requirements, how they work together and how we might learn from it. And then in addition, tomorrow, we will be meeting with the LIDC to get a status update on their work. I think I'm just gonna leave it there. I did give you all kind of a report, so, you know, feel free to ask any questions, but I think I did.
Thank you. In the interest of time, thank you.
Exactly.
Council President Circa, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you very much, Matt.
Thank you. Councilmember Barr.
One question regarding the Pepco LED connection. In the proposal that went down, the LEDs they were installing, we're going to have a network associated with them so that they actually would indicate to Pepco centrally when the bulb stopped working. So there was no need for any external report to them. Question is, if they install LED bulbs now, are they going to have that system in them? So there will be no need for external reporting. That's something to check.
Yeah, I think they called it smart nodes, if I remember.
Well, yeah, and I'm sure that was a full smart node. This seems to have been a separate system just by itself, so it's just to see if they can have that in there.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I will make another note and remind myself that that should be part of the discussion with them.
Is that it, Councilor Barr?
That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Heller, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kumar.
No questions, just many thanks to Matt for driving all of these different elements. And I also appreciated him sending a note which was Jack Frank's request on sort of the small town infrastructure, small town infrastructure chairs, benches and trash cans. I think you sent a note out last week requesting people to send you.
And I've gotten a few responses.
I mean, I'm sure you've got a few responses. Then you should feel free to respond within bounds of reason.
And we'll be getting more.
But thank you for for doing that. That means a lot and thank you for driving everything.
Okay, thank you. And last but not least, Councilmember Ravak, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay, and with that, before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I would like to applaud the council for all your outstanding questions, comments and preparedness tonight. And we will see you on August nineteenth at five to seven PM for the next work session.
I did want to say one quick, I forgot to mention this just very, very quickly, that I did confirm with former council members Peel and Zoighauser that they will attend the reopening to be there for the naming of the gallery.
Excellent, excellent.
Great, great.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Good night.